Okay, Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills. Township Council Special Meeting, April 9th. The meeting is called to order by Council President Karifi. What time is the meeting? What time is it now? It's 5:30. So called to order at 5:30. The agenda of this special meeting, to the extent known, is as follows. This review and discussion of the Mayor's 2024 Budget Recommendations. Formal action may or may not be taken. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by FOTN Notice in the Office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on March 27th, 2024, where it has remained posted since that date. A copy of this notice appeared in the Daily Record on April 1st, 2024, and was back to Star Ledger on March 27th, 2024. Can I please ask everyone to stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Hernandez is on her way. Mr. Musella, here. Mr. McGrath, here. Mr. Neglia, here. Mr. Karifi, here. Okay, others present at the meeting are Mayor Barberio, Township Attorney Mike Lavery, Business Administrator Jamie Cryin, Municipal Clerk Khaled Madden, and CFO Leonard Ho. Council President, we have a quorum. We may begin. Okay, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and start with the Budget Summary of Administration and Finance.
Okay, I have a statement to make, Council President.
Go ahead.
First, you got my draft letter, so I do want to read it into the public. First off, I'd like to take the opportunity to present to you the 2024 Budget and Draft User Friendly Budget, both of which are outstanding reflections of the fiscal responsibility and acumen's we have demonstrated over the past three years. The documents are not just numbers on paper, but our demonstrated commitment to fixing the township finances and to thank you for your support, hard work, and partnership in making this happen. I want to thank our Business Administrator Jamie Cryin, CPM, Chief Financial Officer Len Ho, and members of the finance team who worked diligently over the last few months with each town department to analyze and streamline our costs so much as possible in order to deliver the best possible services to our constituents. I'd also like to thank the members of the Finance Committee, Council President Paul Karifi Jr. and Council Vice President Frank Neglia for their many hours of work and input to help us produce a responsible, balanced budget that minimizes the tax burden on our residents and continues providing the services our community deserves. We are proposing a fiscally prudent, structurally balanced budget that corrects the course of the past and finally puts Parsippany back on sound financial footing. And I say this proudly, sound financial footing. Stopping the kick the can down road mentality of the past positions and our finances are very well not only for 2024, but 20, uh, 20, but for years to come. And we have an order here today. The projected tax rate increase is 2.78%, which is basically your tax levy. That is roughly a $6 per month, $72 per year impact to the average residential home. Fixing our financial position allows us to flex, allows us the flexibility to not only make significant and strategic investments in areas most requested by residents, public safety, public works, and paving, parks, and recreation, as well as able to fill vacant positions to give our personnel the backing to support these efforts now and in the future for our residents. But it also allows us to manage the tax rate and deliver a responsible municipal increase, that is, this year. An example, for a $6 per month, the residents will see our continued commitment to public safety with the addition of three police officers. Best of all, this budget does not have one-shot tricks and does not, and I'll repeat it, does not utilize any utility surplus. The proposed budget is the outcome of strategic planning and choices my administration has made over the past three years to fix the mistakes of the past and invest in our people, the benefits of which are now being fully realized and able to hard work you will hear about in more detail tonight and the final hearing for the adoption of May 21st. I'd like to add this. As you know, when I came back in 2022, and I said this in 2021 I was running, no matter who the mayor was going to be, myself or Mayor Sariano, it really didn't matter much. There was a lot to fix, a lot of, a lot of headaches that had to be dealt out. As you know, there had to be some tough decisions made, and I had, I had no, I had no issue making them whatsoever. There was medicine that had to be administered, and we administered that medicine. And as you see each year, our tax rate continues to go down. It doesn't go down by accident. It goes down by the hard commitment of my team, of my administration, and everyone up here that wants to make Parsippany the best town it can be, which I believe it is. It was a lot of, a lot of pain. As you know, I've taken a lot of attacks, and I continue to take them. But I'm a tough guy, so I don't really care how many people want to throw some misinformation out on me and lie about me. That's fine. Feel free to do all that. But I'm going to tell you the truth. And I'm going to tell you when it's no, and I'm going to tell you when it's yes. And we really worked hard on these budgets over the last three years. We are in a fiscally sound good situation. In 2021, we were downgraded to a negative, and I don't, I forget which bond rating agency it was. And last year, they brought us up to a positive. With the budget that we have this year, I wouldn't be surprised if we get moved up on our bond rating going forward into next year, which is a commitment I made to the community and the residents of Parsippany, Troy Hills. With that being said, I'd like to hand this over to our Administrator, Jamie Cryin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council President, Council. This budget is, Mayor hit all the highlights, and we're going to get into a lot more detail next week when the budget is actually introduced. This is the budget hearing, the departmental budget hearing right now. Tonight, you'll be hearing from representatives from the largest departments in utilities in our town. Police Department, Department of Public Works, including Parks and Engineering, Department of Planning and Zoning, which include building, water, sewer, and the know. The interaction between department directors and the Township Council in public is instrumental in fostering transparency and a unified approach to committed governance. This collaboration between the administration and council down to the departmental level ensures that every decision made and every project initiated is a step towards providing the highest amount of accountability and ensures a consensus is achieved towards realizing the township's strategic goals. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes with these budgets. And tonight, you'll hear from each of the departments, and you may hear some numbers that may surprise you or may shock you or may bother you. But what I hope you concentrate on is that we have, Parsippany provides more and better services than any other municipality in the county. And we do it for just about 25 cents on your tax dollar. So one quarter of all of the taxes you pay goes to an incredible amount of services, more services than any other municipality in the county. And what you're dealing with is numbers and increases and issues. But behind all that, you have incredible workforce from top to bottom. You'll hear some of our department heads and division heads. And I hope you're as impressed with them as I am. Underneath them, you have rank-and-file workers that are doing an incredible job and only want to do their best for you. That's all I have right now. I'm just going to kick it over to our CFO, Len Ho.
Good evening. Our proposed tax rate for 2024 is 2.78% or $62,228.625 in dollar terms. The average home assessment value is $313,513 or the average tax in dollars is $2,664.86.
And just another point, Council President. Online in our transparency section, there is, under 2024, there's 2024 Budget and Financial Documents. The Draft User Friendly Budget is up there. Obviously, that may change because we're still in draft format. When the budget is introduced, that'll be up there. And as it is right now, we are a month and a half away from the public hearing for this in May. So that gives plenty of time for scrutiny or congratulations, whichever one you want to give. We appreciate both.
Okay, we can move on to the Police Department.
Good evening, everyone. Glad you outdid yourself with these. I'm Chief Pantana. I want to thank the council for allowing us to present our 24 budget. A lot of thought and consideration went into it. Before I, I'd like to acknowledge some people, Mayor and VA, for all the work they've done with us over the years. I've been here 35 years as a police officer in Parsippany. I've never worked under an administration that's been as open to discussion as the mayor and the VA. And I've been through a lot of mayors, and I've dealt with a lot of them at a higher rank. So I really do appreciate the effort that you put into working with the Police Department. But most importantly, I'd like to thank the community. We are the lucky, and I say this at every meeting. I know you probably remember. We are the luckiest police department in the county. We get to work for such a fantastic community that's very supportive of our police department. We hear it all the time, you know, keep up the good work, great job. And we're not looking for accolades, but it's very rewarding to hear that from the people in the town. And we're going to continue to give them the service that they deserve, continuing in the future. And that's a lot went into the budget, thinking about that, how to protect and serve our community. I hope you guys received the brief presentation that we sent you. I, at the beginning, I just went over a couple of staffing issues, you know, how our departments laid out so you could get a visual of what we're dealing with. We have 100 police officers now. Or this, this contract, I mean, this budget will give us 100. And I could reiterate what the VA had mentioned, Jamie. We have a fantastic police department. And I think the community should be very confident in the fact that they're highly trained and very compassionate police department. They, their main concern is the community. And I know that's easy to say because that's their job. That's what they should be doing. But that sometimes is easier said than done. And they really do consider this like a family, this community. And that will continue. So we went over a few, just a few of the graphs here. There's an extra one that we have at the beginning. Our Communications Division. We've changed some of our names. Councilman Karifi, you know the normal division sections. We changed different names to go with more OEM statements. So some of this stuff, groups and squads are a little different than what we're used to. Just a few of the achievements that we've had over the past couple of years. We're, we are an accredited police department, which is constantly monitored, keeping up on our policies and procedures for more best practices throughout the state of New Jersey. So I'm proud to say that we completed a review in '21. We'll be up for another review in '25. And it's really, it's really helping. We get to see what other departments throughout the state are working on. And again, best practices throughout the state. So it's really, really great to have that for the town and for the department. We're recently involved in the Arrive program. I don't know if anybody's aware of what that is. That's where they pair certified mental health professionals with law enforcement officers. So we have someone that's going to be at our police department at least once a week. So if there's any calls that have deal with mental health, they're there for us on scene. You know, it should reduce arrests, use of force incidents, unnecessary hospitalizations, and improve mental health outcomes. So that's, that's a big thing. I know at a lot of the meetings, we talk about grants and production and stuff like that. We're going to continue the grants that we had in '20. In '23, we had drive sober, get pulled over, click at your ticket, pedestrian safety grants. In '24, we'll be doing all of those plus distracted, distracted driving and others that come along. So we're, we're doing a lot when it comes to grants, which increases our ticket production, but also shows that we're out there, which hopefully will prevent accidents and speeding and all incidents and that such. We've been utilizing ALPRs, and I'm going to mention that again later because we brought that up in the capital budget. So ALPRs, we're utilizing. We've had a couple of hit-and-run crashes and stolen cars that we detected because of the ALPRs. So they're, they're a great asset. I know that, Matt, I know we talked about the county getting grants. So I was informed today that we, they are going to put ALPRs in our town.
Great.
We don't know how many because they got a large amount of money from the county. So that's going to help us immensely. So with the, with the two that we have, asked for, plus the five that we have, and with the cars, it's a, it's a great, great asset for our police department. So we have, in the, in the past year, we've increased our school, our special officers, class threes, to have more in the schools. So right now, we have six officers in the schools, class threes, which takes two main officers out of the middle schools, which helps us put them back on the road or wherever they need to be assigned. So that was a big, that was a big help. And that was actually an idea the mayor came up with in a conversation with the Board of Education. So that's a big help. And I know I saw some Board of Ed people here today. They could tell you those, they're very valuable, the class threes in the schools. We're going to continue our community relations, Neighborhood Watch Program, which I saw Cassandra here tonight, Active Shooter Presentation, all different scams and identity theft, presidential security tips. We're going to continue that. Our goal is, as we hire more officers, that we increase the number of people in our community policing unit. So right now, everybody knows him, Remo DeLisandro, is our point guy, right? I'd like to have three or four Remo DeLisandros to go throughout the community and do stuff. And that's why hiring the officers and doing it the way the mayor has, and the council, with that resolution that you passed, that would replace people when they retire. And now these three officers that we're going to add hopefully this year will add on top of the ones that are, that are replaced. So that's a big help. That'll move us forward. Some of the goals that we have in '24, continue to hire officers to increase patrols within the neighborhoods, community relations, increase public presence, and assign officers when we get up to staffing in more of the specialized units. Investigative Bureau, we need more people. Right now, we only have five, which, and that's with just adding one person within the last month. And also our Traffic Division, which we added two people. We're only up to four, but that's a big part. And we have them concentrating on the, on enforcement. So they're out there writing tickets. You could see I added in that presentation tickets from 20, summonses and arrests from like '21 was very low. We were coming off of COVID. And then they increased in '22. And then in '23, they were even higher. So we're getting there. We're trying to, as we've talked about it numerous times, Deputy Chief Dowd, Captain Wieners, and also Captain Carney, we have meetings all the time. And we're, we're trying to change the culture of the department, right? We went into a little bit of a lull, a lot of reasons for it, but we're starting to build it back up. We have a lot of young officers that we're hiring in the past two years or so, probably about 20. They're young, they're aggressive, but they need to be taught the right way to think. And I think we're heading in that right direction. We also, you know, common theme throughout the county and throughout the state, auto thefts. So we'd like to, as we build up the department to get us, we were in the auto task force. We did have officers assigned there. We had officers in the past assigned to the prosecutor's office. We'd like to get back into that. So that's one of our goals in '24. When we get these officers that we have in the academy right now back to us, and then when we get the three that are going to go through the academy through this budgetary process, we'll, we'll start assigning people. Our training, we're constantly keeping up on training. I know people have mentioned about Active Shooter. We did a great training this past year, which was handled by the FBI. We're going to continue to do that. We like the fact that it's a hands-on training for two days. And then we do our computer training also. But the active training is very, very good. The FBI was fantastic in instruction. And, and it's, it's encouraging to me because we actually have officers now that want to do that training on their own. So they addressed it with us, you know, saying, hey, we want to, we know the department can't send everybody all the time, but we want to get together on our own and train for that, which, that's great. I mean, that's, that's what we're looking for. So, you know, we, we just made promotions, so we're going to send people to leadership training and career development. You know, and that, again, that all helps, all of the training that we get. So like I was saying, some of the crime stats we had in '21, you know, just to use the summonses as an example, in '21, there were 1,641 summonses. That's just the e-ticket ones. We didn't track the ones that are in books. But in '22, they were at 2,362. So, you know, it almost doubled. And in '23, we're at 4,241. So officers are out there working, and they're getting, they're getting the job done. We have a 23 case in 2023. We had roughly 240 follow-up cases. We've closed 195, and we still have 46 that are open. And as you see on that one page, calls for ser, calls for service. 2021, the reporting was different. We didn't have a code for initiated acts. So that number's a little bit lower. So we're at 29,000 calls roughly in '21, 61,000 in '22, and 60,000 in '23. That, that number's usually going to be around that area. And I only assume that it's going to get higher as we do more building in town and, you know, more people moving in. So we added, in this past budget, we added a supervisor for our desk. Our desk is, and you see in the budget, there's a lot of cost involved in the radio systems. But we have a civilianized position that used to be manned by an officer. So we added a civilian position as a supervisor who's in charge of soon-to-be 12 dispatchers. As everyone knows, we're not at the county. We do our own dispatching, which I know the mayor was instrumental in that years ago. We get a service in this town that other towns in the, in the county don't have because they're into a clearinghouse of other departments and people that don't know the town. Our dispatchers only work for Parsippany. They only send us to calls in Parsippany. So there's more awareness of what we have, the problems we have. I think it's, it's great that we do it that way. So again, some of the budget highlights that we mentioned were Motorola radio maintenance, increased staffing, and civilianization of another position that used to be manned by a sergeant. Our goal is to, if the budget passes, to put a civilian, an ex-police officer, in that position. That position would be body worn cameras handling Oprah requests, which takes a lot of time. The body worn cameras are, like, you could probably acknowledge, anyone that gets arrested, anybody gets stopped for a ticket, they want a copy of that body worn camera ticket. So that's information that has to go out, that needs to be redacted. And, you know, so it takes a lot of time. And we utilize it, actually, when the officer was in there, the sergeant, we utilize that as picking up on infractions that the officers might have done that we didn't see, right? That nobody reported. But we might say, hey, this is a training issue. We need to address this issue because he did this, this, and this. So it's really an important position, and it would be a full-time position. That's a lot of work involved and with the Oprah request. That's, that's very big. Capital budget, we are asking for vehicles, which I've known, I spoke to a few of you about that, 911 upgrades and expansion of the license plate readers. Added a couple more of those. So in the, you know, we've had a lot of burglaries in town. Everybody's aware of that. Although our numbers went down slightly from last year, they went down, and we're trying to do more for that. We've had many discussions over the past eight months or so, and we determined that we would move our schedules around to accommodate when we thought that the highest crime would work. So it's knocking wood. We think it's working. We're constantly monitoring it. So we eliminated the shift and then added another shift later in the evening to accommodate for that. So we do have a lot of officers on, on duty at a, between certain hours. I think between like 10 and 4 in the morning, we're concentrated. So that's, that's very good. And I know the public, I hear from a lot of people saying that they see the police officers around. That's what we want. Our way of, my way in the discussions that we've had, I think the only way to prevent these crimes is saturation of the neighborhoods and visibility. So that's what we're doing. We want people to see the police officers. They're not hiding. We want you to say, man, I saw two cops come down my street today. Or, you know, that's great. That's what we're looking for. We have consolidated our, our upper ranks also. So we promoted the deputy chief, which was a vacant position for years. But we combined two of our divisions. I'm going to use the term division because I don't even remember what the groups and the divisions are. So, sections, so. So we combined patrol and the investigative sections together. And then we have support services. So we're going to, we're going to monitor that. Right now, it's working the way we want it to work. So we, in our budget, we didn't add that extra captain that we had for, god, 35 years or so. We were actually up to four at one point. But it's, it's working. So that's all I have to present to you guys. If you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them. And I know Jay's here with OEM. So if you have any questions about that or animal control, we'll answer those briefly.
Sure. First and foremost, I'll just make some general comments, and then I'll get to my questions. I think this was a fantastic presentation, Chief, and for all those who, you know, prepared this for us because I think it really breaks down what the PPD is doing in light of horrible state policies that embolden criminals and handcuff police. I also think that, you know, between you and Deputy Chief Dowd going to the community programs, being accessible, and increasing your visibility really helps put people at ease too, to let them hear from you what, what you're doing. So, you know, thank you for your service to the, to the municipality. And now with that said, I would just have some questions for you. On the, the budget, there is a line item, and it's under Communications and Other Maintenance. Last year, about 191,000 was spent. And this year, it has gone up to $660,580. Can you help me understand what?
Do you know what number that is, Council?
It is, account number ends in 453. It's on the second pa, if you have the same budget book we do. It's the second page, account number ends in 453. Says police colon.
Okay, great. And that's why I'm glad we have Captain Wieners here. So Captain Wieners just came from that division. This part of the budget, we were in conference with him on updates with the computer system. So he's, that's who's saying that to me. So I, we could just, maybe just, I'll address this.
Sure. Can you hear me? So in 2017, the township, actually going back to 2015, we're having radio issues. By 2017, after researching our options, we decide that we're going to basically build a new radio system to replace our old radio system. By 20, that came up late 2020. It was up and running. So as part of that process, we had three years of not paying radio system maintenance that was included in the original contract. For the years before that, we had a radio maintenance contract line item that was in the budget. We just haven't been paying that for three years. That's back. It's more in-depth than it was previously. Our old system only had four channels that were analog. We now have five channels, a fourth radio site, and as a result... We now have five channels, a fourth radio site, and as a result, we currently have 28 radio talk groups that not just encompassed the police department, but also fire departments, EMS, all the utilities, public works, schools, et cetera. So everybody in town now has radio contact with one another for an emergency situation. Every vehicle, every handheld radio can talk to anybody else in the township. Obviously, it's higher-grade technology. It's more to maintain, but the cost is basically to keep our system up and running. And if there ever is a problem, Chicago, you know, Motorola from Chicago is in contact with our system and they can make emergency repairs within a matter of minutes. So that's the, that is the reason for that increase. Again, it was there previously, you know, going back to 2017 and before, we just hadn't been paying it because when we did the bond for the new radio system, three years of maintenance was included.
Okay. My, my second question would be regarding overtime. I see that last year overtime was budgeted for 500,000. We ended up at 653. And this year, 750,000 is, is being requested. Can you, you know, walk me through your thoughts there?
Okay, so, so as we discussed before, I put in an overtime budget based on what we do the year before. The past three years or so, we were understaffed. Okay, so, so go back, you know, to 2021, we didn't hire for like three years, or 18, 19, 20, we basically didn't hire. That lowered our staffing. So that makes overtime increase because we have a schedule that we have to work and we have to man those, those schedules. We were low in supervisors too, which added to overtime, and we were short in dispatching, which added to overtime. So when I look at it, I, I come up with a number based on what I'm thinking our staffing is. Sometimes we go higher, we're never really lower. I, I would assume it's going to be at that level this year. It, it's going to get better. I could guarantee you it's going to get better because we have hired more people and we have more staffing and the way we configured our shifts, it's going to add to it, but there's always unexpected overtime. I mean, there's just things that happen, you know, when a rest lady in the ship, overtime occurs. You know, a, a big catastrophe, dump, did, overtime occurs. So we're, we try, we're doing everything we can in this budget to be not only effective but efficient, right? So we're lowering, we're, we're trying to lower overtime when we can, but just in the past, it was rough. It was, it was tough. So we're just starting to come out of that now. Like I said, the mayor hired, you know, and the council hired 20 people in the past two years, which is, you know, we haven't seen in a long, long time. So as the numbers go up with staffing, we're hoping that the numbers go down with overtime.
Well, they, they have, in, as far as patrol officers, with the adjustment of the schedule, the overtime is trending down, not by an enormous amount, but it's, it's trending down. So our hope is that this schedule continues to work. It has been working. We don't think there's any reason why it will not continue to work. Adding the new officers is only going to help, but like the chief had alluded to, unanticipated overtime does occur, and like Captain Wieners just mentioned, we do have to also consider the election year and protests are very expensive. And we can almost guarantee there are going to be some level of protesting at some point. So it's a good idea to have that buffer or things like that.
And my last question would be, you know, given that we're expanding our police department, which is something I've, I've supported and I think is a great idea, are there any opportunities with a larger police department to, you know, collaborate or work with other external agencies that can promote cost effectiveness? Any thoughts on, you know, what that might look like?
No, that's great. That's a great question because it's funny you brought it up because I forgot to bring it up. We, we utilize the county extensively. Somebody mentioned that one of the neighborhood watch meetings about getting K-9. We used to have K-9. It's very costly to have K-9. Just using that as one example. We utilize the sheriff's department for everything. They have all the toys, to be frank, you know? We'll utilize any agency, every, every law enforcement agency is willing to help. So we utilize them when we can. So it, it saves us money in our budget not having all of that stuff. But like I said at the beginning, I want to start getting more involved with other agencies, meaning the task force, assigning somebody to the prosecutor's office. The Secret Service had a, on loan, officer. So all of that helps, you know, and with some of them, we get money back in return because we get forfeiture money, which will help the police department for non-budgetary items. So that's all great, but yeah, we're always looking for ways of making our job easier. If we could do it at less money, that's fantastic. So we do utilize other agencies that are around us. Most importantly, the sheriffs, the sheriff Dan is fantastic. He's very helpful and his staff is very helpful with us, so.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for a great report. That was very informative.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good job, guys.
I have a good staff.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to public works, parks, and engineering department.
that Jim's department is one of the bigger departments and it's, it's really on the front lines. You know, everyone recognizes the police as being on the front lines and they are, no doubt, but public works is on the front lines of a lot of the issues that people deal with on a daily basis. Fixing potholes, making sure that trees are not falling, you know, every two seconds and dealing with ash borer, disease and all of that. Making sure that our beautiful parks stay beautiful. Our sanitation department, which does a great job, making sure that our garbage is picked up on time and efficiently. And we provide more services in the public works department than any other municipality in the county. I know I said that about earlier and you're just going to keep on hearing me say that over and over again because in particular, you have things like bulk pickup, which is done on a weekly basis, where a lot of towns do it on a, a once-a-year basis.
Thank you.
You lonely down there? I'll come sit with you. Don't hold my hand. Good evening, folks. Anybody have any questions?
Well, can you, you start off by, you know, maybe giving us an overview of how the last year has gone for all of your departments?
Well, the last year has been better in that we've started to finally fill the empty spots that we've, you know, had. So we're putting more people in to get, you know, the work done. That still doesn't mean that we're not there yet. We still have a couple of open spots. I think parks right now, we're down to one. Roads were down to two. Sanitation, we're down to three, which is a far cry from what last year was. Last year, we were just that far behind. We weren't maintaining anything. We were basically putting out fires. So last year was, between last year and this year, we've certainly been able to catch up a little bit. We still have a little bit of ways to go. Winter-wise, we were good. We had a couple of small storms, but nothing, nothing that really crippled us. You know, as, as the BA mentioned, the emerald ash borer is still there. We're, last year, I think we spent $50,000 on removal, on hiring a private contractor to come in to help us remove some of the dead ash trees along the street. We just can't get to them. And we're going to do that again this year. You know, it's, it's, we just don't have the manpower to do that, you know, by, by hiring the company to come in. At 50,000, you're probably looking at 500 trees maybe that, that we can, you know, get with them. They're, they're, you know, but that's a drop in the bucket when you start looking at all the developments that have, have these trees. And we have a list right now, which is almost two years old for takedowns, and that's with these companies. So we're, you know, looking to do that again this year. To me, it's, it's, you know, a safety issue. We get them down because once they start, you know, getting that far, being dead, they become hazardous. We just can't be everywhere once, ever. Sanitation-wise, we're doing okay now, better than, like I said, last year. And then road department, we're starting to go back and get, besides filling potholes, we're starting to get on top of some of our other projects that need to be done, our catch basins, you know, that kind of stuff being rebuilt. Certainly with all the rain that we've had, we've been able to stay on top of keeping a lot of the trash racks and other things clean. So it lessens, it will never stop the flooding, but it will lessen the flooding, so.
What would you say your top priorities are for the upcoming year?
Services, providing the resident services and having, not having to cut any. Hopefully get enough people hired that we can go from putting out fires to actually trying to start maintaining things, which is the right way to do it. But that's going to take a little bit of time because we were so far behind with manpower.
Okay, I recall at our last budget hearing last year, you had said that our starting rate was too low. And since that conversation, we have since raised the rates. So would you say in your opinion, that has worked with helping us recruit and keep employees?
Yeah, the, the mayor and the administration were, recognized this too, that you, you can't keep people if you don't pay them. So we were able to up the, basically, starting salary, once they get their CDLs, they, they went a, you know, a little bit higher rate. It has helped recruiting people and keeping some people. You know, there's always going to be a, a bigger pot outside of the township. If somebody's looking to go, they're going to go. Doesn't matter how much. But yeah, by raising the starting salary, it has helped us retain some, you know, the, most of the employees that we've hired.
And putting aside money, what other investments can we make in, in your department that would help us keep people? For instance, I know other municipalities have certain equipment that reduces the risk of injury to potential employees that we don't have. Is there any thought on, you know, what we're doing to reduce injuries to employees and, and bring in new equipment that can, can really reduce the, I guess, the physical burden of the day-to-day aspects of the job?
We have a, in, in all the departments, we have a pretty good array of equipment to lessen the, the labor and, and, you know, try to keep the physical labor down. But with any job of this category, you are going to have labor, you know? It's just the nature of what the jobs and criteria are to, to provide the services. I mean, I think right now, we, we are getting, heading in the right direction for replacing some of the older vehicles. That's, you know, again, that's a capital issue. Years past, we've always had, try to put in for three or four pieces of equipment yearly because then it just, as they turn over, you don't wind up with a lump sum of equipment. Years past, we were denied that, so we're kind of back in the same boat. We are certainly throwing everything that we can in there to try to get the equipment back so that we don't have things that are 20 years old, that, you know, they take more mechanical repair. So we're, we're going back in, in that direction.
If I may add, plus we're looking at the, I know we spoke about it in Capitol, the one-armed bandit. And that would reduce the amount of labor that we'd need. We don't need one man on a truck. So we're looking at means of doing that, but sometimes the topography in Parsippany just doesn't work in certain areas.
Yeah, again, it's, it's something that we were looking to do, but again, we had other priorities come up, whether it's equipment that we had to purchase before that. So we've kind of put that on the side for right now. We're going to revisit that to see if we can do it through the whole town or part of the town, or, you know, that's something that we're going to revisit in the, in the future.
And, and do you feel like this budget will address some of the lingering concerns that you've raised relative to manpower, to deferred maintenance and, and getting where you want to be? Or how many more years do you think it's going to take where you'd be 100% satisfied with all of your departments?
Well, if I had my way, probably in another year or two, we would certainly, you know, I can tell you, parks, for example, we were, back in 2003, we had, when I took over there, we had 30 people. Up until last year, we actually had 27 people because, you know, attrition or people left, the work didn't go away. So I've, I asked at that time, not only for the 30 people, but for six more, I then cut it down to 30, to three people because if I can't get three positions, why am I asking for six? So next year, we're going to be looking at three additional people for parks, probably a couple more for roads and sanitation. So as long as I can fill the, the, you know, address the services, you're looking at probably a couple more years of, of adding manpower because that's basically what we need. The town's gotten bigger and for years, we, we did not keep up with it as far as manpower was.
And is there any planning with respect to our projected population growth? In the next two years, there's 11 apartment complexes being built that's going to bring in, on the lower end, about 4,500 new residents. So is there any thought on, you know, if we have the staff today to address that and meet that demand? Or, you know, can you talk about how your department might change, your departments might change with a very large increase?
Well, again, it depends on whether the town takes over some of these projects or not. That's my understanding, some of them are private or we're, we're not going to.
Most of them are private, so we wouldn't even, we wouldn't even service them, but right now, right now. I mean, you know, if we have to, then yes, we're going to need more equipment and more manpower.
Council president, just a real quick, the Kelly Act allows us to deal with larger entities, larger condo or apartment associations, where they, they do the services that we provide for other parts of the town and we pay for that on an average basis. Some of these agreements that we've done in the last year since I've been here, I'm not sure about the ones before I got here, but we're negotiating things into financial agreements that say that they will be, that the entity will be responsible for the garbage collection and pickup and, and snow maintenance. So it takes it out of our hands and puts it back into the developers' hands.
I just have a question about the Green Acres maintenance. And I guess this is for everybody, just some of our open space, if anyone's go to that, to help maintain some of the Green Acres properties?
Well, you, I'm glad I let you answer it, but I know Green Acres money could be used for, open space money, not Green Acres money. Open space money can be used for maintenance of, of areas that we like. um, recreation and all that.
It can be used for the infrastructure, it can be used for, uh, maintenance, it cannot be used for purchasing equipment, I believe.
Right.
Um, so we have in the past, we have used open space funds to offset some of the parks budgets, some of the, you know, get some of the projects done. Um, I think Smith Field was one of them, part, one of the phases, part of Green Acres or open space funds helped.
I was wondering if open space dollars would be allowed to help with the ash or Dixie tree kerfuffle?
That's a good question. I don't know the, the, all the parameters of that.
Yeah. I know other municipalities have done that, but I'm just...
Well, that, well, I, that's actually a good question, Judy.
Because it doesn't like it's going to go away.
We have to look into our ordinance because the ordinance was amended in 2012, the open space ordinance. So we'll look into the ordinance to see if it can be amended to do that. But we first have to find out what the criteria of the state is with regards to using open space money to take down the ash board trees. Um, I know when we, um, did the, um, ordinance in 2012, that had to do with, um, building two high school football fields and, and stuff like that, you can use the money for that. But, but that's a good question, I'll, we'll look into that.
I guess my, my last question, Mr. Walsh, is when I looked at the 2023 budget, um, and I cross-referenced that with some of the personnel, there seems to be a large amount of outstanding promotions, some of which have been going on almost a year now. Do you know what the holdup is for promoting certain personnel?
I believe we're waiting on contracts. Well, the budget's number one, and number two, with regards to the personnel, um, the promotion, that, that will be discussed amongst us, um, with regards to promotions. We will, you know, I'm not going to discuss it here in the open because it has to do with, um, personnel.
Thank you.
But Council President, one more thing, I'm sorry to, to keep jumping in.
No, it's fine.
But, uh, Jim mentioned something about, uh, the tree list and it being as long as two years. That sounds very concerning. Um, but I can tell you firsthand, uh, Jim is not allowing for a dangerous tree to wait two years. Those things are getting addressed immediately. And I live in, uh, Morris County in another municipality, and I live on a county road. Uh, we had a dangerous tree, an issue with the tree, and they left us waiting, uh, uh, months for it, not because they were doing it on purpose, but because they're going through the same issues as we are here in Parsipony. And, uh, as soon as that tree became a, a, a grave danger, they came right out. Uh, so they do a great job, um, almost as good as our guys do.
Almost.
Almost, not as good. I, I tend to disagree with you, but okay. But also, um, if I add into the budget here with regards to recreation and, and parks and forests, we also budgeted for a cricket pitch, um, in Vol, on Volunteers Park. So, right, it's in capital, it's a professional cricket pitch that they have been requesting. And I spoke to the commissioner of, um, the county, uh, John Crickus, and they're in the process, um, and they're going to give me more information on actually a professional cricket field up in the county. It's in Parsipony that, um, the property, but putting a full-fledged cricket field in as well. So I asked them whatever help they might need to contact me.
I have a silly, well, it's not a silly question. What are park attendants, 74,500?
Park attendants are, um, years ago, we used to have somebody go around, check permits, um, make sure the restrooms were locked up at night. Uh, you know, if you're on the field, you're supposed to be on the field. Uh, if the lights are on and nobody's there, they would turn the lights off. Uh, basically after hours, after, you know, town hall and everybody's closed up, they would go out and do, do a, you know, a lap or, or a route. Um, we haven't had a park attendant in a good number of years. Uh, the other, the, the last guy that did that has retired. Um, you know, but we leave it, we leave it in there in, in case we do get somebody to come in and do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh, being someone that's outside a lot and all the fields and all the parks and, um, as well as you're a snow removal crew, I just have to commend you and your department for outstanding work that you guys do. Um, to do all you do with the amount of people you have is just amazing and you get a lot out of your guys and, uh, you just, you should be commended for that. You do a great job and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public. Yeah, no, that's at the end, the public's at the end. Okay, moving on to planning, zoning and building.
No, I'm sorry, Council President.
Oh, excuse me, engineer.
Uh, the public session will be at the end at, after all the talks. Mayor Justin Lees, municipal engineer. Um, you have before you, um, the budget for, uh, 2024. It's, uh, very similar to last year. We try to hold, um, our lines as close as possible. Um, what you will see, there, there are really three items, or three line items that, um, will be somewhat of a change. Um, namely, the building maintenance, um, uh, requests an increase of $1,300. And really, that's just, uh, you know, the building, we, we moved into the building in 1990. Um, really, nothing's been done to it since then, so, um, slowly we're putting, you know, some renovations into it, some painting, cleanup. Uh, recently, uh, and really the reason for the increase is for the replacement of the lights. The old fluorescent bulbs, uh, light fixtures are failing, and instead of just replacing one at a time, it'd be better just to come in and put a, a better plan together, get them all replaced at one time. So really, that's what the big increase or the additional money is for the building maintenance. Um, also, we're looking for an increase of $830 in the computer hardware and software. That's just to replace the tablets our road inspectors use in the field. Um, they, the ones they're working with now are about five years old, they're starting to get glitchy, they're starting to have problems with some of the programs, and we're just looking to upgrade those to newer tablets for that, so they, they can continue doing what they're doing with that. Uh, and the last one is for the consultants. Um, we're, last year, we had a, a budget of a thousand dollars, actually for years before that, uh, going back probably about four or five years, it was a $10,000 line item. And, and the bulk of this is for a consultant to help us with, um, the CRS program. And if you're not familiar with that, that's, um, a program, uh, part of the NFIP, which is the National Flood Insurance Program, which allows policyholders to get discounts on their flood insurance based on certain criteria and qualifications that we as a municipality do. But you have to be enrolled in this, in this program, and, um, when you meet certain goals, it's like a point system, and you get so many points, um, you'll get a 5% reduction in your flood insurance. If you keep going, you can get 10, 15, 20, and so on. They're in, in 5% increments. Um, this is something we want to get back in, we've been trying to do it. Uh, we've had, uh, just a lot of problems with FEMA in the last couple of years, um, just trying to get back into the program. We got the data we needed, uh, from them earlier this year, so now I want to bring that back up to that 10,000. So we have enough for our consultants to do what they need to do to get us back into this program. And we're looking, uh, years ago, um, we were, we, they, the, the rating system is from a 10 to a 1, 1 being the best, um, I don't think there's anyone in the country that even has 1. We were a, a 9, so there was a 5% um, uh, reduction, uh, years ago in the flood insurance policies. We can easily get back to that, and our goal is to, you know, try to achieve maybe an 8 or a 7. We have to, uh, you know, once we get into the program and really get going, we'll evaluate how far we can go because there's a cost to it. So, you know, with 300, uh, policyholders, are we spending more money than what their savings is in, in the flood insurance rate? So that, that's where that balance would be, to see what number we can get down to and what the percentage is. But the goal right now is to get into the program and then start developing it from there. So that's really what that increase is of $9,000, just get us back up to that 10,000, uh, which we had years ago, which we think will be enough to, to cover the consultant fees. Uh, and, and the other part of that is also, it's not just for the CRS, it's any consultant we use, if it's a, um, you know, a, a structural engineer that we need, which we don't have the expertise in, or, uh, traffic-related issues, you know, we'll call them in on, uh, sporadic bases, so this covers, you know, any of their costs. But for the most part, all the other line items, we, you know, we, we do a good job of trying to hold within our budget and, you know, you'll, you'll see year to year, certain lines, you know, we'll, we'll, uh, overextend on one, but we're on others, and we try to maintain that, um, year to year, so we're looking to do that going forward.
I appreciate what you're doing. Can I ask some questions?
Sure.
Okay. I appreciate what you do because you do hold the line here, but there's no shortage of work that you have, guys have gone. Same with the DPW with stormwater and all those increasing issues. So how, how do you guys do it really? Because it's just worse every year.
Yeah.
Financially, it's...
It, it does get tough. Um, right now, we are, uh, down actually two people. We're, we're looking to fill, um, one of our road inspector positions, uh, the person left the end of last year, and we have an engineering aid position, which, um, the goal of that engineering aid is really to, um, to be like a catch-all kind of position, someone that can be in the office to help with some of the stormwater requirements, uh, but we can throw in the field as well to help with the inspections because, you know, with all of the development that's going, we, you know, we, we have a, a, a large number of capital projects that'll go into construction this year, but also it's the private development that we do site inspections on. So, um, you know, the, all these different, uh, housing developments, uh, it does get taxing, um, you know, fortunately, we're able to make it through the winter, um, okay, but now the weather's getting ready to break, we've already bid two projects, and, uh, we just sent two more to the, uh, purchasing department to advertise for, uh, others. So things are going to start picking up soon, and, uh, we've been interviewing, and we have a couple of good candidates, um, that will help us. And, you know, that's the thing, we just have to, you know, try to be as, um, diligent as we can to, you know, stay on what we do to, to, uh, keep up with it. And, uh, you know, council member, you, you brought up the stormwater.
Yeah.
The stormwater regulations for municipalities is getting harder and harder.
Right.
And, you know, they, they refer to it as the MS4 permit, it's the Municipal Separate Storm Source System Permit. Every town in the state, it has a permit from the DEP for stormwater, and there are numerous obligations, uh, and responsibilities we have to do yearly. And as a matter of fact, uh, May 1st, we have our annual report for last year due. And it goes into, you know, what roads are swept and how much debris did you pick up? And, you know, the, the cleanliness of your maintenance yards and fueling stations and, um, uh, stormwater compliance for private and, and, uh, uh, public facilities. And some of the new ones, and I, I think you, you may have seen some of the new, uh, or if you haven't yet, they will become new ordinances that are required for us privately-owned salt storage. So think of any, um, you know, uh, shopping center or office building you've been to, and you see that pile of salt that they have in the corner that they use during the wintertime to, you know, de-ice. Well, there's now regulations that they have to have certain protective devices around, either tarps and hay bales and whatnot to keep, um, you know, rain or other precipitation from melting and getting into the storm shores unnecessarily. Uh, this all falls onto us. We have to do inspections on this, we have to make sure there's compliance. Um, every detention basin that's been built since 1994, we have the inventory, we have to make sure that the, that the owners are inspecting them and reporting to us on a yearly basis.
Yeah. That's why I'm asking, because your department does that.
We do, yeah.
It's just increasing. So I'm thinking like from the outside, if there's grant opportunities, we have a green team resolution again, that there's opportunities for stormwater help that we, I'd like to talk with you and work with you and see if we can get some grants to help with some of those initiatives.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for what you do, both of you.
I guess, Mr. Lees, uh, recently I, I held a town hall, and one of the questions that I received, um, I thought you'd probably give a really good answer on. Um, the, the, the question was, from an engineering perspective, specifically about our roads, how is the town adapting and changing to meet the oncoming onslaught of new vehicles that are going to be on our roads when these housing developments come online? So can you kind of talk to, maybe big picture, from an engineering perspective, what you're doing and how you're going to address that?
Well, yeah, that's interesting because, um, you know, a lot of the developments that, um, are, are being built, um, are going to, maybe fortunately, um, tie into roads that aren't municipal roads. You know, a lot of them will tie into county roads or state highways, and, you know, the, the, the capacity issues would really fall onto them. Um, from a, a local standpoint, any of the local roads we have, there's really not much we can do to increase capacity. You know, uh, unless we're going to, uh, start widening right-of-ways, taking properties, adding additional lanes, um, you know, we're, we're kind of stuck with what we have, and unfortunately, that's part of, you know, the, the, this whole rub, I guess, with the affordable housing is, you know, towns were given a, a number that they had to meet, but there's no real good resources or thought into what the impacts are on those numbers. Um, you know, are, we're already one of the most densely populated states, and now, you know, the roads are choked as it is, and we're going to be adding more to it. So, you know, I think a lot of it is just working with the state and the county to see if there's better initiatives that we can embark on to help, um, move traffic. It's gonna, you know, it's gonna be tough, and I think it's going, going to be somewhat problematic, but, um, you know, with maybe additional traffic lights and, um, coordinated timing of them, they may be able to move traffic a little bit better. Um, but other than that, you're, you're kind of, you know, stuck with what we have unless we really embark on a huge widening-type program, which, uh, you know, creates other issues as well.
Yeah.
Like a specific intersection that is now, uh, in the news is obviously 46 and North Beverwood with the recent fatality. Is there any thought on doing something about that intersection to make it different from what it is now and more safe?
Yeah, you know, that's a state highway, um, and actually, North Beverwood coming in from the south side is county. We, we are on the north side, we, we maintain it. So I haven't heard anything, uh, yet about improvements and what could be done. Um, but again, it'd be a multi-agency discussion that would have to take place to see what, um, what if anything can be done to, to improve that. Um, you know, and again, you, you look at that intersection, you have, uh, changes in topography, you have multiple lanes in all directions, um, is there room for a jug handle or an overpass without taking properties? And, you know, those are the, the tough, large-scale decisions that are going to have to be made, they're going to make improvements there.
And then lastly, can you just walk us through what major capital projects you're working on for the rest of the year?
Um, so as far as what we're looking to budget for?
Correct.
What we're going into construction?
Yeah, what you're going into construction.
Okay, going into construction, so we have the North Beverwood Streetscape, there's two phases of that that'll be going in construction this year. Um, we have our, um, uh, 2024 road resurfacing, uh, program, so that's just milling and resurfacing roadways just to, um, you know, uh, improve the road quality surface. Um, Edwards Road, that's the south side from 46 to, um, New Road will be improved, there'll be drainage improvements and curving, um, and, you know, the wind stripping on it, you know, the road quality is, is horrible. A lot of that is attributed to just the, the moisture down there, the, the lowness close to the floodplain, it just, it, it, it's something that has to be looked at every, uh, you know, so many years. Um, we also have, uh, Putting Stone Heights, so, uh, we started a project, uh, two years ago in Putting Stone Heights, and it's a... a project two years ago in Putting Stone Heights, and it's a minor widening, more so drainage improvement, road reconstruction. But we're also helping out with the sanitary sores there. We're working with the sewer department. That whole development up there is on septic. So what we're doing is, and there's no way to put sores in by gravity. The topography just changes too much. But we were able to put, design in a force vein where homeowners will be able to connect in with grinder pumps. Grinder pumps are actually, you know, a lot less expensive than them replacing their septic system. And it's something that's better for the environment. So this is will be the second phase of a three-phase project up there. We'll be getting it to construction as well this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
All right.
Thank you both. Okay, planning, zoning, and building departments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Who do you like us to start?
Would you want us to? We actually have a handout that Terry's prepared.
That would be great.
I think Claire also emailed this to you.
I, if it's the same handout, it was emailed and it was placed in their folders. The hard copy was also placed in their folders as well.
Oh, good.
Yeah, they have hard copies in the folders.
Yes. Are you looking to speak to me about all six of my departments, or do you want most of the questions geared to construction?
I guess maybe you could start with, you know, in between the last time we met and now, I'm sure you guys are trying your best. But permits and COs, particularly from residents and business owners, the complaints about how long it takes are still very much there. So what I would really like to hear is, can you walk me through what you're what you're doing or what you still need to tackle what, in my view, is probably one of our top three problems that precipitancy suffers from industry-wide?
Now, we have been interviewing for the last year. And every year, as we have many people that are retiring, as we have an older staff, the market out in the competitive field for construction employees is we're competing with other municipalities. And everyone is in the same state that they're doing more development, and they need more inspectors, and they're increasing their offices. So now, in the past, where we have posted jobs, and there was a large market of inspectors who might have been people in the field that were a plumber or builder or coming into the profession, we're now competing with other municipalities. So when Terry and his staff are conducting an interview, they've just interviewed with five other municipalities. So it is very difficult to find the employees with the skill sets and the experience and then have to compete with the other municipalities. We have done, and last year, as you'll see in Terry's memo, we have increased the staff with three full-time and two part-time employees, technical assistant, full-time building inspector, a full-time plumbing inspector, a part-time inspector, one electrical inspector part-time. So we have been in the last year increasing the staff, but the volume of work continues to be submitted. So that is an ongoing matter that has to constantly be interviewed. We've had recently someone else retire, so we will be doing more job postings and interviewing. But the volume of work, and as spring and summer comes, everyone wants a deck, pool, and shed. So that volume will continue. And there's a lot to be said about the paperwork that's submitted. What you don't understand is that the employees and the department and the staff have to struggle with the applications that are submitted. The perfect architectural plan does not make it through all the subcodes perfectly the first time. So you'll get a complaint from a business or a resident who doesn't understand that their application was denied. But it's their job to read the code and interpret it and to make sure that those plans are correct. So we come off at times as the bad guy, but we're doing the best that we can to enforce that code. And Terry can answer better on that.
So part of the problem, which we're not going to fix, I've been doing this for 36 years, and the plans that we're getting now are not as good as what we used to get. So the attention to detail isn't there. And we are probably, I want to say probably 100% of the applications that we get are something wrong with them. It's very rare to get an application where everything is correct. Application's filled out properly, the plans cover everything. So we're kicking back. I mean, almost everything gets kicked back because it doesn't meet the code. And we're not, we don't look at everything. You know, there's a lot we have to look at. But so that's kind of scary, but it is what it is. And you talk to the state about it, and they don't want to hear it either. They're just like muddle through and get it done, right? So that's a huge, a huge part of it. So I don't know what the answer is to that, right? You know, because it is what it is. And a lot of times, you get complaints, and this is this is the scenario, and it happens a lot, is you get a complaint from an owner, right? Because they don't know that their architect or their contractor submitted something, and it got kicked back. And they tell the owner, well, it's the building department. We're waiting for the building department. And they're not telling them that. And we don't tell everybody. Like, we usually deal with the architects, the engineers, and whoever the responsible person designated on the file. So the owners aren't getting a phone call or an email saying, hey, by the way, we're missing all these items, right? So they don't know. So they call and they complain. Because they, hey, my architect says the building department's holding it up. And nobody wants to admit that, hey, the architect didn't do a good drawing. And the architect's not going to tell the owner, hey, I did a crappy drawing, and that's why it's being held up. And that happens every day, every day. So we're not going to fix that. We're not going to fix that. However, I think we're doing a lot better. And I'm sure the mayor and the BA can can tell you that we have, just in the five people that we've hired in the last, what, four, four, five months?
Right.
Not even, right? We have significantly taken away that backlog that we had. So having the extra staff is huge, having enough people. We have a lot of big projects in town, as you know. I don't want anybody to go downstairs, but if you go downstairs and go into the lunchroom, you're going to see there are plans all over the place, big projects. And those are just the ones that we have that have come in. So there's a lot of big projects going on, and we're going to get busy here, and we're going to need more inspectors. So, you know, I'm sure that the mayor and the BA explain to you that, you know, the state has put a new rule into place that if we cannot do the inspections in a timely manner, they're going to be able to go to a third party. And then we'll have to refund money for them to pay for the third party to do the inspections. So we're trying to avoid that. But as Ms. Smith said, there's a huge problem finding qualified people. Like, we wanted to hire an HHS, which is the highest-level licensed building inspector, to help with plan review. I can't find one. We hired a full-time guy with RCS, or he has ICS, but he doesn't, he doesn't have any experience. You know, so it's very difficult to find people because we are competing. One, we have a shrinking pool of inspectors, because nobody wants to be an inspector anymore, right? If you go to a, if you go to a seminar for CEUs, for inspectors, right, you talk about lack of diversity. It's not a very diverse group. It's a bunch of old white guys in the room. And there's like, maybe, you know, it'll be one woman and maybe one person of color. And you're like, where is everybody? They don't want to be inspectors. And so we're an old aging group that's getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And people don't want to do it. And especially if the construction is booming, which it is, you make a heck of a lot more money building things than you can inspecting things. So
That's, Terry, I'm sorry to joke to Council President. That's the other point. You're not, we're not only competing with other municipalities for these employees. We're competing with private business. They, these, most of these people are contractors on their own, and can make much more money doing that than they can inspecting a property.
What municipalities are our biggest competitors?
Well, they're all over. I mean, and people are willing to travel. So, you know, we lost one of our inspectors to Hawthorne.
One to Sparta.
One to Sparta. Where did Franco? I forget. But, you know,
In Sussex County. I mean, it's, it's not, at first, it was just Morse County. But they're even, because Sussex County is having the same hurdles, that they're raising their salaries to pull our inspectors from our area.
We lost one inspector, too. He went back to being the contractor.
Yeah. Because he said that he would make more per week going back to his business than being an inspector, that everyone wants a contractor. So it wasn't worth being an inspector. So, and he said, when it slows, he'll come back and be an inspector again. So it's not just the pool of interviews, but we're also competing with people going back to their original trades.
So you had mentioned two problems earlier that I want to touch on, take one by one. The first problem you mentioned being applicants submit their plans wrong upfront. Do we provide first-time applicants or contractors with an FAQ of, here's the things that you might do wrong, of, you know, is there any education where we can help people not make those mistakes upfront? So you don't waste time, they don't waste time. Is there anything we're doing like that?
We do have some handouts and stuff that we try to guide them through some of the most difficult processes. Like, if you're going to do a demo permit, you're going to take a structure down. We have a handout that says, these are all prior approvals, all the letters and stuff we need. But there's just, it's so varied that we can't cover everything. And it's tough because ultimately, our job is not to teach. Like, we don't have time for that. Like, we try to help as much as we can, but I, and we are. Actually, it's not our job, but we're teaching every day. Every time you call an architect and say, these are the things that are deficient in your plans, you're teaching them because you're saying, you need to do this, you need to check this section of the code. And then they want to bounce it off you. And it's like, you know, they have options. They're the design professionals. We're not supposed to have to tell them. They're supposed to submit it correctly. That's the way the code reads, the regs read, but it's not how it happens in reality. So we do, we do our best to do that.
I also think there's a misunderstanding, especially with residents, when they call and they have questions. I try to explain that you think of construction as a, as one hole, and that Terry's doing the reviews. But in essence, there's five different subcodes in that department. You have electric, and you have plumbing, and you have building, and you have fire, and you have elevator. Those are different people. So that plan is moving from each subcode official. So you could submit an application for an addition as a homeowner, and you could be denied by fire and electric, but it'd be approved by plumbing and building. So there, there's a constant teaching to the homeowners that they think, well, you know, I got approved by building. Well, no, you didn't make it through plumbing or electric. So we're constantly trying to explain that, that their, their plans that they're getting has to meet all of those. And back in 20 years ago, when I started downstairs, you had one person who had multiple licenses. That doesn't exist anymore. You don't, you know, we're, we're training as much of our new people in multiple licenses, but that one person who has multiple licenses, they don't really exist. So that's a learning curve for them to understand that it's not one person down there who's holding up. You have to get through several different, different subcodes. And because of the amount of inspections, because of the projects, I mean, I'm going on 33 years here. I have never seen the amount of applications, especially even in zoning, the amount of pools and decks and sheds. I mean, it must, the finances must be doing well because everybody's building, and everybody's improving their homes, which is what we want. But it's, it's difficult for us to keep up on that volume.
Yeah. Yeah. Because I find you guys have a lot of untapped potential for the municipality. The faster you guys get permits and COs out, the quicker we get revenue in. And so, you know, fixing that lingering issue is still a top priority. The second problem, I said, is something that I get at least once a week. I get a call from a resident or a business owner that says, oh, nobody's getting back to me. I haven't heard anything. Then I have to call Jamie Cryin'. And then it's this, you know, endless feedback loop. Do we have any tools where I would be able to log on and see?
The portal.
The portal. I don't, do we, does the council have access to it?
It's on the website. Everyone has access.
So let me, let me talk a little bit about the
So I could say to the resident, hey, look, Jennifer kicked it to your contractor. It's with him. I see the notes here. Because oftentimes, I'm flying blind.
We, this, I'm sorry, Terry. We posted on our website that this portal was active. It was active for everybody, I think, what, two, three weeks ago, maybe more than that. And we're really going portal-based in most of our departments. So residents can get on, see where the permit is, see where all this is. And some of them, we tell them, you know, we had a situation just recently that they went online, they saw it was still open to resident, and they were happy. So, I don't know. It's a different portal. Not all portals are the same. And, you know, so
And, but the mayor's talking about, so the construction portal,
Right.
Which, I mean, we're actually quite excited about. And so the last time that we met, we talked, which was, I guess, May, right, of last year. So we talked about the portal and it's been online. And of course, you know, it's going to take a while. There's a link on the website to get to it. And the information right now is limited, but, you know, there's an opportunity to expand it. So some of the things that we're, we're still trying to do, and we're going to get there, is, and part of the state mandate, is to be able to do some permitting online. So we are going to, at some point, be able to do that. So there's, there's a lot of capabilities there. Right now, they can go online. So like, if somebody wonders, hey, if someone has a permit for doing their work, they can go online, put in an address, and they can see if there's a permit or an application in. They can't see right now all the notes as to why it might be denied. But that's, that's a step we're going to get to. So in other words, in the future, owners, contractors, architects will all be able to go on the portal and see what is being denied and why. So they'll see the notes from the inspector, why it was denied. So we're not quite there yet, but the availability that is there, it's just that, you know, we're doing it in steps, you know, because we don't want to just throw everything on all at once. We want to make sure it works and, sure, you know, the mayor
Plus, when I brought it up to a resident, they, they said, can anybody get on it and look at mine? And they were kind of disturbed at that.
So we don't want to do
They were disturbed that if someone else, and myself, anyone can go on that and see where they are. And, you know, that, that kind of disturbing, like Big Brother type of thing.
Yep. So one of the other things that we're looking to do is, was accrued in last year's capital, is we're going to get some plan review tables, big computer screens that are for plan reviews. Even though we're still waiting for the state, it's been years, still waiting for them to figure out how to do electronic plans, signatures. When you send something to the DCA for review, it's electronic. And then when they, you go back and forth, and when it's done, they send a paper set, and then they stamp it. So we are going to do the same thing. We're going to try to get that on board. So that way, because a lot of the firms, everything's being done on CAD and electronic. They can send it to us. We can review it, go back and forth. And when it's done, we'll say, send a paper set in, sign it sealed. We'll sign it. Because right now, one of the things, as Ms. Smith mentioned, was there's so many people have to look at it. You only have two sets of plans. So theoretically, two people can be looking at the plans. There's only one file. So only one person will be looking at the file at any one time. So we're trying to get as much as we can in the digital format, because then I could have five people looking at the plans at the same time. So that's one of the things. Again, last time we talked, I said, hey, we're in a multi-year project to upgrade these things. And so that's the next step. So a lot of things have, we've accomplished that we talked about last year. And those are the things that we're still trying to move forward with, and we will. It's going to happen. It's going to get better every month, or every so many months, it's going to get better. But we still, it's finding the people is hurting us.
And with utilizing the people that we have, are we changing the hours, like staggering hours, allowing people to come in at eight or come in at 10, leave at 6, or even come on Saturdays to do overtime? Is that something we're doing?
We have increased overtime. But that's a stopgap because you burn people out. Right? So you can't constantly be doing overtime and coming in every Saturday. So it's good, you know, as a stopgap, but you still need to fill those positions. And we are doing a lot more overtime. We don't really stagger the hours because the state mandates when we're open. But we do early inspections, we do late inspections, and we'll come in on a weekend and do plan review.
And then with the additional office space, are we trying to get additional space here? Are we able to maybe lease a very small office?
We're in discussions with that due to, we have employees right now that actually don't have a desk. So we had at one point the downstairs, a lunchroom, so that employees wouldn't have to leave the building. They could have lunch. We've been eating away at that space little by little, and I've been taking more and more. All the plans are down there now. We now have a couple employees that have desks in the lunchroom. We're discussing, you know, the options of what we can do. But we're becoming, I mean, zoning is maxed out on space. Planning board and board adjustment were maxed out on space. Construction is sharing desks. We purchased the inspectors' tablets so that at least if they were not able to have a desk to sit at, they could do more work while out on the road and mark their inspections, you know, passed or failed. And that way, there'd be less time to have to come back in the office and actually sit at a desk. So we have several options, but we have been discussing what we're going to do. We're at the point where we're probably maxed out in our space downstairs.
And I guess with respect to some of your increases that you're asking for, I'd like to turn your attention to one thing I had a question on, Ms. Smith. Under planning, it's account number 270, and account description is consulting services. It says that 2024, the amount requested is $130,000 for various professional fees related pilots. This might be redevelopment expenses, but it looks like last year, we spent over $75,950 on it. So was that all us spending?
It's a combination. That account in the past paid for all of your professionals. The township planner, the board planners, the board engineers. That's all taken out of their consultants. So on a year where we're doing a giant revision, let's say, on the zoning ordinance, you'll see a giant increase in that section because it will pay for the planner to do those reviews. So during, like, when all the overlays were done a couple years ago, there was a giant increase in that line item. So you are seeing, and I think I actually have some of it. We had to increase it because it's paying for the, not only the consultants and the planners and the engineers, but also the attorneys. And there is some charges that are, yes, for the redevelopment.
Are we able to?
And some of them are in the 2023, too.
Are we able to get a breakdown of who was paid for pilot work?
I can try to run those numbers, year-to-date, the ones that we already expanded.
Yep. So, Jennifer, every budget that consulting services could be different.
Could be different. The year that we did the master plan, the year that we did the master plan, it was larger than this. Because that paid for the planner and the engineer, and we met with the residents. So every time we went out, and I think you remember, you attended those, you're paying for the planner and the engineer to attend. So that year, we did a complete revision of the zoning ordinance, and the consultant fees were high.
Okay, thank you.
I think that covers it, yeah.
Thank you for all you guys do. It's really hard. Thank you very much, diminishing professionals.
Do you have any other questions for any of my other departments?
Okay, we'll move on to the water department.
Good evening, members of the Township Council, residents and colleagues. Just to introduce myself, my name's Sean Andres. I'm the Water Superintendent. And to my right is Kevin Bucin, the Assistant Water Superintendent. The Township of Persipney Troy Hills owns and operates what is considered a large public community water system. Public utilities such as this water department are regulated by the federal EPA and the State Department of Environmental Protection. As a Water Superintendent and licensed operator of record and direct responsible charge of the supply, chemical treatment, and distribution of safe drinking water throughout the township, I must ensure that the utility is adequately staffed and equipped to maintain water quality, adequate fire protection, and uninterrupted delivery of water to the township's residents and businesses, which speaks directly to this year's budget statement requesting $3.3 million in operating and an additional $4.3 million in early capital appropriation for this fiscal year in an effort to maintain funding towards our capital improvement program with $20 million currently adopted. The US EPA and NJDEP are constantly evaluating and updating the standards for safe drinking water. Regulators are setting new standards for new and existing contaminants that we are required to monitor for. Maximum threshold values are being lowered, which requires an increase in sampling and monitoring, and in some cases, requires new treatment techniques. Regulated PFAS, let's use this as an example. Regulated PFAS, spelled PFAS, and stands for per- and polyfluoroalkyl substances, were unregulated contaminants until 2018, when the state adopted maximum threshold values of 14 parts per trillion. The EPA is expected to adopt the lower threshold values later this year, which will require this utility to treat all its groundwater source wells. In response to these proposed MCLs, I have authorized a consulting engineering firm to perform a PFAS treatment feasibility master planning study for the township so we can properly plan and budget for the design and construction of PFAS treatment plants. The water department maintains a staff of 30 employees. We operate 34 remote facilities throughout the township, which includes 18 well stations, six booster pumping stations, one seasonal interconnection with Jersey City, and 10 storage tanks. We maintain over 220 miles of water main, mostly of cast iron construction, and ranging in diameter from four inches to 36 inches. Our distribution system includes 2,000 fire hydrants and 4,000 inline gate valves, all of which are required to be inspected, operated, and maintained annually with certification to the NJDEP. We maintain, read, and bill over 15,000 water meters and routinely accommodate and attend to a variety of customer requests. These requests include water quality concerns, leaking service lines, meter failures, high bill inspections, new construction, inspections, and so on. Outside of the routine maintenance of the systems, staff also responds to water supply and distribution-related emergencies 24/7/365. Our infrastructure is old and aging. We have been aggressively making capital improvements to our water system for the past number of years. We have 26 active capital projects at this time, and it's my intention to continue upgrading and replacing our assets and infrastructure. Wells tend to underproduce over time and need redevelopment and eventually replacement. Our booster stations require maintenance and upgrades to the building envelope, piping, valving, pumps, and motors. Our steel storage tanks require regular interior and exterior inspections and need to be rehabilitated and painted every 12 to 15 years. Cast iron pipe is brittle and fails, which results in water main breaks. Per the Water Quality Accountability Act, we have created a 150-year plan to replace all the water main within the township, prioritizing the most vulnerable areas such as Route 46, Lake Hiawatha, and New Road. Under the New Jersey DEP's revised lead and copper rule, we are now required to identify and replace all lead and galvanized service supply lines throughout the township by 2031. Mount Tabor Phase 1 is currently under construction, and Phase 2 is currently being designed with the goal to advertise for public bid this fall. Needless to say, there is a lot to do. And at this time, I'm happy to address any questions you may have regarding our 2024 budget statement request.
First of all, if I can just say, I just want to thank you guys. You know, all the water main breaks we get in town, you know, these are the people that you see out there in the middle of the night when it's 10 degrees outside and it's freezing. And these are the people that you see that are making those repairs for us and getting people's services back as fast as possible. So I just want to thank you guys for that.
Thank you. People don't care about water until they. Or they're questioning what's in their water. So PFAS is a big one. I was going to be asking you about that. Have you guys started, or is that coming?
So, right now, I have two replacement wells under construction, which includes brand-new treatment plants to treat those individual wells. The one well in the Hills of Troy area was originally designed to be a softening plant until we found that we had a PFAS problem there. We did have traces of PFAS there, which is currently under the current MCL. But knowing that the EPA is going to lower that MCL from 14 parts to four parts, and knowing how the state DEP is, they're probably going to want it non-detect, we worked with our consulting firm and the DEP and changed that from a softening plant to a PFAS treatment plant. Our other replacement well, which is in the Forge Pond area, that was originally designed to treat for 14 dioxin. But the treatment technique for 14 dioxin will also remove PFAS as well. We do have traces of PFAS. Again, the level of PFAS at that particular location is below the current MCL. But when the new MCL is adopted, we will be above it. And the state's probably going to want non-detect again, but we'll have it taken care of there. But knowing that this is going to happen this year, that's why I authorized the engineering firm to do this study. Pretty much to give me a guidebook, and really the council, administration, and our CFO, an idea of how much it's going to cost. We have to do it. PFAS is there. It's in every well, unfortunately. We have to get rid of it. And right now, you know, these two treatment plants are under construction. Minimum $5 million a plant. And unfortunately, out of the 18 wells we currently operate, you know, we don't have the property to build individual treatment plants at those locations. So part of this study is going to kind of tell me, you know, do we do centralized treatment? Do we do a number of centralized treatment plants? Which I'm almost envisioning we're going to need. So, you know, let's say we need half a dozen treatment plants. Now, they're not going to be $5 million. They're probably looking at closer to $10 million, if not more.
So I see you also have two positions open. How are you doing in your?
So, better. We were able to have a meeting with administration and finance. We had a number of retirements since fall last year. We were able to fill those positions. We had a couple more retirements this year. We were able to fill those positions. We had a couple employees that moved on to other opportunities. We were able to fill those positions. So right now, we have another resignation, a separation from the township. So we're currently looking at candidates and interviewing candidates for that. And we're looking to fill an open supervisory position for our water supply and treatment section.
We're cut out for you. And the cast iron replacement, I mean, is there an estimate on?
So, a couple of years ago, when we did the Lakeshore Drive in Lake Hiawatha, we did about a mile or so of water main there. At that time, a couple of years ago, it was almost $400 a foot.
Okay, thank you.
And we have over 220 miles of water mains.
So first, I would like to thank you. I went on a tour of the water utility not too long ago, and I agree with what was said. Thank you for your hard work for what you guys do. Gives me a whole new appreciation for, you know, water treatment and dealing with, you know, things that I really didn't understand. You know, I guess, you know, you had brought up, a lot of our infrastructure is old and aging. And I'm sure everybody on Facebook always sees, we're posting about the water main breaks that routinely happen. Can you maybe walk me through, you know, what you guys are doing to, you know, deal with that challenge?
You know, these emergencies are not predictable. You know, we keep our staff up to where we need it. We train our staff so they can take care of these problems proactively. You know, we purchase new equipment, replace equipment, keep our vehicles and equipment in tip-top shape, or always replacing tools and whatever. That's just part of the industry, water main breaks. They're not really preventable, other than replacing water main, which we have been proactively doing. The state actually required that all public water utilities generate and maintain this 150-year water main replacement plan in response to aging infrastructure. It's not only in this state, it's around the country. You know, this cast iron water main, I think at that, when it was put in many, many decades ago, you know, it had maybe a 50-year lifespan. We are way past that. But we have plans to replace. We are replacing. We're hitting, you know, the worst areas right now. Route 46 being the first one, sections of Lake Hiawatha, which we started. But unfortunately, when the state adopted their revised lead service line rule, we had to kind of change gears. Because the state, well, the US EPA basically said, look, you can't have lead service lines anymore. I think we all know why, right? But the state of New Jersey said, okay, can't have lead, you got to get the lead out. But we're also going to include galvanized services as well. And historically, you know, over the years, we've had enough information and experience to know that for the majority of the township, there is no galvanized. We are majority copper, which is good. There are some galvanized lines to very old homes that were like the original homes when there was tons of farmland around them. But we knew that the Mount Tabor section of town was mostly galvanized. So we changed gears, and that's why we're under construction with our Phase 1 Mount Tabor job now, which is not only replacing service lines from galvanized to copper, but we're also taking that opportunity to replace, you know, older water main there as well. And we had a kickoff meeting with our consulting engineer a few weeks ago to start designing Phase 2. And again, we have to be in compliance with the state. We have to have this done by 2031. Not a lot of time.
And with one of your increases, I just had a question. It's under electric, and the account number is 303. You're going from $603,873 to $800,000 for electric?
Yes.
Walk me through what that is.
So, it's very costly to operate a water utility. We needed electric to run our pumps, our motors. We operate 18 groundwater wells. Our wells are drilled anywhere between, I don't know, let's just say 100 to 200, 350 feet deep. How do you get that water to the ground? You got to pump it up. And how do you run that pump? Electricity. So out of the, you know, all our well stations, our booster stations, you know, they're all electrically powered to be able to distribute this water throughout the township. We have six pressure zones in town, which is why we have all these booster stations. We have six pressure zones in town, which is why we have all these booster stations. Our, our, I'm sorry, so our two largest pressure zones is where all our wells live. We pump out of the ground there, and then we got to pump it all the way up down to get it up to our residence and powder mill. That takes an awful amount of electricity to do that. And just like any other utility bills, like you see at home, our main electric supplier is JCPN L. So I'm a JCPL customer at home. My bills go up at home. Guess what? Our bills are going up to what the water utility, to pay for the electricity.
Is there an opportunity for renewable ground pumps, or not so much for...
There could be. I don't see or hear of a lot of talk about that. You know, I, I go to a few conferences throughout the year, professional conferences, and there's really no talk about that, believe it or not. So is there an opportunity, perhaps? I'm just not familiar with it or have heard of that.
There's a lot of talk in renewable energy circles, though.
Yes, there is. But perhaps not with the...
Yeah, with the water utility.
Correct, correct.
And I guess my last comment would be, same thing I've asked a lot of other department heads, you know, where do we stand relative to the whole, you know, spate of developments that are coming online? Common concern I get is, do we have enough water? Is our water usage going to be affected by the new apartment buildings, the new commercial development? Can you comment on that?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. There was a concern many years ago with that. And at the time, we kind of had to put the brakes on it and speak to administration and say, hey, you know, all this development, where are we getting this water? You know, at that time, is kind of where we took a very aggressive approach in rehabilitating our wells. You know, these wells do start to underproduce over time. You know, they can be a newly drilled well can be operating at 100% capacity for five years, probably not even that, and it will dwindle down over time. Unfortunately, in the past, predecessors before me weren't very proactive in rehabilitating the wells, and they got to a point where they were significantly underproducing, up to the point where we are replacing wells today. What we have that's not under replacement have been rehabilitated. You can bring them up to, near to their capacity. You'll never get them up to 100% capacity. That's what you need a replacement well for. But we work very close with a hydrogeologist, and we have a plan where we are not going to stop rehabilitating. This town can't afford it because of the redevelopment. You'll see in my capital budget, we need to at least rehabilitate two wells a year to stay on top of these wells being able to, to produce what we need them to produce. And redevelopment or rehabilitation of wells is not cheap, but, you know, that's about $150,000 to almost $200,000 per well to redevelop a well.
Are we on track for doing two rehabilitations a year?
Yes.
Okay.
Council President, just a quick point. We were on the scarce resource, that has been removed due to making sure that these wells are back up and running.
Yes.
And if I can add, with regards to all the housing, that has been approved prior, and, you know, we have an albatross coming our way with the new affordable housing rules. The courts pretty much dictate, as they did in, on Landadex, that you have to build a well if it's for affordable housing. I just wanted everybody to know this, because it's not the town, and that's what they pretty much demanded. We upgrade our wells, and the scarce resource order basically is that all water gets attributed to the affordable housing projects before any other project in the town. So we're trying to stay away from that. But that's the problem with the affordable housing. Once the courts get involved, once you have special masters, once you have all those things, they pretty much tell you what you're going to do. In the past, I know when I was mayor prior, then the former mayor, the former, he went to it as well. I know, we sit here, and once the court starts demanding that you have to upgrade your wells and you have to build wells, that means they're just fixed on affordable housing. They're fixed on getting these projects done, and we're going to be dealing with it in January, as of January 31st, 2025.
And, and to add to that, sorry, Mayor, to add to that, the DEP also requires townships and licensed operators like myself to run a calculation, a firm capacity calculation. So whenever a development is presented to a township, and there's a proposal for development, we ask that they provide what they are estimating to be their water demands for that particular development. And myself and that particular developer's engineer have to run this firm capacity calculation. And at the end of it, it pretty much spits out a number, and we check it against what our capacity is, our firm capacity is, or what we have in town to distribute water, and it's either yes, we can do it, or no, you can't. And we have, it's been a yes for a number of years now, which is why we're able to develop in the town, that we have the water.
The Highlands, being in Highlands Conformance in the planning zone, amendments have been added to that new affordable housing bill that considers the water resources. So I think that's a first time that we're going to at least have them be able to weigh in, and it will affect our numbers. So those, because we are in Conformance, they're a resource for you guys as well, I mean, for precipitating.
Yep.
And we should look closely at that and work with them to make sure we can get our numbers lowered at where we can.
Sure. And, and you know, another thing to, to remember is, we do calculate what's called connection fees from these developments. Historically, they were known as capacity fees. In the modern term, it's connection fees. That's pretty much, I do the calculations for water and sewer. You know, it's based on a number of factors, square footage, you know, if it's a warehouse, let's just number employees, that kind of thing. You have to, what we take in consideration are the water demands of that development or project, and we run it through a calculation. We do have a connection fee ordinance that we do follow. But basically, that's that developer's, owner's, builder's contribution to the township. So the utilities with the water and sewer can continue to upgrade our systems when we have these big developments come into town. Because it does, you know, connecting to one of our water mains, it takes a toll on our water main. You know, we have to be able to pump more water, you know, to meet those demands of that development. So those connection fees are important. We are operating under an old ordinance. I believe there's a draft ordinance out there that we have to, you know, look at it again this year with administration and CFO, but that's just another opportunity for us to collect more connection fees for the benefit of the township.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Sean.
You're welcome.
Okay, Sewer Department?
Council President, just a quick point. Joe Beckmeyer, who would usually be here, he's...
There he is.
He's, he's laid up at home, but insisting on, on still working and be on the phone. Gina and Craig, who are intimately involved in the Sewer Department and know the goings-on and do a great job, and they'll do a great job here, too.
Thank you.
Is he there?
Can you hear him?
I'm here.
All right. Good evening. I'm Greg Albert, the Assistant Superintendent of the Sewer Utility. This is Gina Calabrese, the Office, our Office Manager, and Joe Beckmeyer, the Superintendent, is on the phone. Joe wanted to be here in person, but he just had back surgery yesterday and was unable to be here, but insisted on being on the call. I'd like to start by presenting a few key items that Joe and I put together, and then I will be happy to answer any questions you might have for us. Thank you to the Mayor, Council, and BA for your support in prior years and your continued support of the Sewer Utility and our efforts to improve efficiency and dependability. The Sewer Utility is a self-liquidating, and as such, has no direct effect on increasing tax rates. A major accomplishment of the Sewer Utility was the completion of the Pump Station 4 redirection project. In addition to the elimination of an antiquated pump station in Forest Main, its replacement with a gravity sewer, based on 2022 figures, saves a township over $30,000 annually in electric costs and over 5 million gallons per year of potable water at a cost of approximately $40,000 per year. This savings allows the use of this water for other needs in the township where there have been levels of concern with availability, and the reduction of the carbon footprint resulted in a $2 million NJDEP sustainability grant. We operate under a GPT's permit and all applicable New Jersey DEP and US EPA regulations. Unlike most of the departments, we must comply with the permit. While some other departments can add or cut programs, we cannot. If we do not satisfy our permit requirements and discharge limits, a construction ban may, may be imposed on new developments of over 8,500 gallons per day for the construction of new pipes. We operate 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year, with many nighttime and emergency call-outs. We can't tell the citizens no flushing today. The flow never stops. On your budget sheets, the 2023 appropriation was $6,499,500. So as presented, the requested 2024 accounts, total of $6,549,900, only went up 0.08%. Many items are flat, some have been reduced, and some have been increased by the administration for services provided, and increases, increases having requested in sludge disposal and chemicals. We were also requesting additional $50,000 be added to line under 301 for the testing of high and medium electrical systems located at the treatment plant. We have our own substation on site. Salary increases will be per unit contracts with total white-collar adjustments made. We have requested 12 full-time positions. Some are pending promotions, others are positions that will be created by the promotions, and others are some new positions and positions that have been open for some time. There are issues and challenges, challenges when hiring new employees for a sewer plant, and sometimes when anticipating loss of an employee. We need to have a second new employee on the payroll to be trained, so they are ready to go when the existing employee leaves. Also, some positions require applicants with special qualifications, education, licenses, et cetera, that are difficult to fill. And even when these applica, and even when these additional positions are included in the budget, they will only be filled after our due diligence is completed and in consultation and agreement by the business administrator. So those, that's everything we put together, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, first, if Joe, you can hear me, hopefully, you feel a lot better, you know? Best wishes for speedy recovery. I knew if I had back surgery yesterday, I probably wouldn't be on the phone. But I guess, you know, my, my question would be, the one line item that stood out was legal services. It looks like, it's on page two, account number 357, says legal dash other expenses. Last year was $6,027, and this year it's $100,000. Can you walk me through why the numbers changed?
Well, I believe it was $100,000 last year, and then that $100,000, again, we only utilized 6,000 of it, approximately 6,000. Joe could probably answer it better, but I...
That is correct. I'm sorry. It doesn't have it at the, the header, it doesn't have that.
Yeah, that just remained flat.
Okay, so remain flat. Okay.
That's if, that's if we have to, you know, address any legal issues with any sort of projects that we have ongoing in the town or at the treatment facility.
What kind of capital improvements are you, are up and coming? Are there?
Well, we do have one big capital item that's going to be for much-needed improvements at the treatment facility, to our aeration system, chemical dish removal, things like that, that are pretty outdated and need to be updated. Other than that, we're, we're planning to do, update one of our pump stations, and then, with that, hopefully, will kind of be offset by a grant that we, we received.
You still have nine MGD? What's your...
We're designed for $16 million per day. Yeah, but we average about $10 million.
Okay. Do you have, I see that, I know you have a lot of the vacancies. You only have two lab people? Is that okay, or are you looking, actually, we're looking for four more?
We actually have four.
You do?
Yeah, one's, one's out on, like, long-term visibility right now, so we have three, three people in the lab right now.
Okay, I must have missed that.
Well, I think two of their official titles are only lab, lab techs, but they've been trained and, you know, they work in the lab. They've kind of cross-trained as operators and lab personnel.
Got you. Okay. All right. I'd like to come visit the plant. I used to work in New York City on wastewater. I'd like to come visit your plant.
Okay, yeah, of course.
Get a tour.
Yeah, me, too. Yeah. Me, three.
Yeah, most people don't think about it. They hit the handle, or turn on the shower, turn off the shower, and...
Same with wastewater.
You know, you know, in addition to the plant, we have, you know, several hundred miles of pipe in the ground that convey the, you know, the wastewater down to the plant.
Do you have a fish tank there? A fish tank?
There is, there is an abandoned tank that has fish in it, yes.
What about your sludge disposal? I know you were working on something that, a few years ago, has that...
Yeah, we still have a long-term sludge disposal plan in the works, but it's just taken longer than expected. Right now, our sludge goes, it's supplied for landfill cover, so we have a contract with an outside hauler that takes that away for us.
So in 2019, before, in your interim, before your year, New Jersey looked at Parsippany and said, wow, you use a lot of electric. You know, the plant is like half of Parsipony's, maybe I'm exaggerating a little bit, but half of the usage of electric. So there's opportunities maybe to see if we could do some renewable energy savings there that I'd like to maybe talk about.
There is, we do have something in the works. We received a grant from the Green Team.
Yeah.
So we're looking into solar. We're doing a feasibility study for solar in the surrounding Sharkies landfill.
Good, good.
So we'll see where that takes us.
Great, so we'll talk.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
And also, Council President, sorry, the food disposal, food waste.
But yeah, as part of the, as part of the long-term sludge disposal, we're thinking about going back to our digesters, and in that case, we would accept liquid food waste, either from, you know, across the way.
It's huge.
From Morris County or from Waste Management, and that would feed the digesters and increase the gasket production.
So even better that we would want to look for some of those renewable...
That seems to be the one that we're leaning towards, are going to go with.
All right, great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to have you back, Sean, for the Noel, right?
Yes, the Noel?
No.
Yeah, we got Noel, you chilling?
We have two hours to talk about the Noel now.
Okay. My name is Joe Janaron Jr. I'm the General Manager of Noel Country Club East and West, and if you, when you see our budget from last year to this year, we're just asking for a short, a small increase due to fertilizer went up a lot of money, and our water, water bill is going to go up a little bit. So basically, that's it on our budget. We got a late start on membership, but as of now, we're up to 763 members, and we have a waiting list over 350. The Noel's in great shape. We got a great Greens Department, and that's what makes the attraction, and we got one of the best golf courses, as far as I'm concerned, in the area. Any questions? That was quick, good.
I'll start.
I was just going to say, Council President, real quickly, this is, the last few years, the Noel was not making money, and this year, it, it did.
2023, yes, we broke even or just went into the block a little bit. We kept an eye on, every month, I was watching the budget, and in previous years, you know, they were so busy, they just felt like they were making money, let's spend the money, and I don't know what happened, but we watched everything last year, and this year, we did raise the rates, because we did a comparison, as per the administration, to check out other golf courses and what they were charging, and we were almost on the bottom of what we were charging compared to our golf course, which is in great shape. So we raised the rates, and, and we have such a demand, we still have a demand.
I was going to ask, do we have any projections on what we'll end with this year?
The new rates went into effect last month in March, probably towards by the end of October, after the summer's over, we're going to do an assessment to see how much we need to increase for the following year, for next year.
Yeah, if we need to increase.
So just to say, there are...
I was going to ask, do we have any projections on what we'll end with this year?
The new rates went into effect last month in March, probably towards by the end of October. After the summer's over, we're going to do an assessment to see how much we need to increase for the following year, for next year.
Yeah, if we need to increase.
So just to say to our staff, we work very hard to keep on our contract, you know, costs on our budget. And our Greens Department, we had a new, Michael Walk moved up to general, you know, our Superintendent for Greens, and he's been there for years and doing a great job. And that's where, that's where bread and butter is in our, is our Greens Department. So, so far, so good.
Maybe Mr. Generalon, you can walk us through what your plans are for the upcoming year, what...
Okay, so last year, 2023, we removed that abandoned house that was there, the old caretaker's house, that's gone. And right now, we're in the process of removing the pool, taking the pool out. We're not sure what we're going to do yet. Either expand the parking lot, but that had to come out. The pool was there. We're going to take the fence down. We're going to clean some of the trees. We're going to leave the building up still because we're using that for storage. And I believe we're going to try to move ahead. The Mayor, at one point a few years ago, wanted to do miniature golf, and that's what, and we still have plans for that, that they took, I think it was in 2012 or '10, '10 or '12, we did, we have some preliminary plans on it, and that's what we're going to do. But we had to get rid of the pool first. That's going to come out, and that whole area is going to get cleaned up. But miniature golf would be definitely a plus and a big moneymaker.
Do you know what the plan might be for working on drainage on some of the, some of the sand traps? I think, aren't there certain holes that continue to be a problem for us?
Yes, our, Michael's working on that now. I don't have an answer for you, but he's, he did a lot of work over the winter time. We did a lot of tree trimming. We didn't remove any trees this year. Did a lot of some tree trimming, especially at the Knoll East. Some of the, some of the traps you said were having issues with drainage. So I believe a lot, some of that was addressed, but I can get you an answer for that if you like.
Yeah, no, I think it looks great. I'm looking forward to setting my, my first tee time for the season, and, you know, really excited at, you know, how the Knolls turned around. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Generalon? All right. Thanks, Joe.
See you Monday.
All right. All right, at this time, if we could just take a five-minute break before we go into the open?
63 now, so.
So before we go, you need a motion first.
We have a motion.
Can't just get up and... Yeah, can I hit a motion? Who made the motion? So Ms. Hernandez, oh, Mr. Karifa made the motion. Ms. Hernandez seconded the roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifa?
Yes.
We're adjourned.
Single stream is a choice. And the last record I have is back in 2019, and we were paying tipping fees, we were paying $97.85 a ton, and our bill back then, Precipine's tonnage was 19,132 tons times 97.85, $1,872,006. That's a lot of money. And I suspect now it's probably at least $2 million. And what this town needs is not only more police, we need sanitation inspectors that actually find people who are repeated offenders. Because the recycle law has been in effect since 1987. There's people recycling before then, but it's a failure. And the one thing I didn't hear was plastic. Plastic is a disaster. No one wants it. And when we see the town, these barrels look like ice cream cones and plastic, nobody wants that stuff. So that corporate convenience, their waste that they put on us is actually costing us. And I would suspect that we're not getting anything back. We're actually spending more money than, than, you know, for our waste than what we're actually getting in return. But municipal leaders should encourage, the easiest materials to recycle are paper, wood, cardboard, and aluminum. Nobody wants glass and plastic anymore. It's a joke. That recycle symbol they put on here was a joke from day one, to pass the responsibility off to you. All right, switch channels. I think what, by hearing the great thing here from the Water Department, that was the most, one of the most powerful things I heard in a long time about our water. I think we should look into the storm water utility. All that runoff winds up in our water. It's only a matter of time before everything winds up in the water. We need to protect our groundwater recharge areas, which we haven't done in the past, and we need that storm water utility. And like I said, it has a loophole, a good loophole, that makes, it comes back to where you put green infrastructure that helps keep the water clean. So it doesn't go with general revenue. It goes to improving your impervious pavements, mostly large corporate impervious services and parking lot. And for the Knoll, I'd like to know, have they made any progress? Are they continuing the river-friendly program, which we've been trying to initiate now for years? And if they dig up that pool over there, if they don't put the mini golf course there, they should make a beautiful rain garden over there at the Knoll with the benches, and after the game, they can sit down with your sweetheart and look at the flowers while you're, when you're done golfing. And they have Rammstein beer up at the golf course now. That, that's a bust. And once you get a taste of this beer, it should draw a lot of people up there. All right, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, Nick, thank you. Anyone else? See, no one else? Make a motion to close?
Motion to close? Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifa?
Yes.
Public session is closed.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion made by Mr. Neglia. Can I get a second? Ms. Hernandez seconded the motion. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifa?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Have a great night, everybody.
I'd like to just, again, thank all the department heads for coming tonight. Thank you very much.